City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilman Goldberg, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Boy Scout Troop One from Main Street Methodist.
Let us pray. Almighty Spirit, give us your divine guidance as we perform our duties in handling the city's business. Let us be aware of all sides in these matters and allow us to make the proper decision as we study each issue. Continue to watch over the people of the Ukraine in their fight for freedom. Encourage all peace-loving nations to speak out in their defense. Protect our Americans being detained injustifiably and allow them to be released and returned unharmed. May we also have a moment of silence for the victims of Uvalde that lost their lives or are still healing from their wounds. Give comfort to all the families affected and help us find ways to stop this terrible gun violence. May we have a moment of silent prayer. Bless everyone present tonight. Bless our nation to continue to be the stronghold of peace and security. We ask all of this in your holy name and let us all say, amen.
Amen. Boy Scout Troop One?
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Excuse me. Back up. Madam Clerk, let's call the roll first. Trying to get us through.
Councilmember Barlow.
Here.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Here.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Here.
Mayor Doeman.
Here. Now that everybody's here, now we're going to do the Freedom of Information Act certification. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of June the 1st, 2022 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Council motion is in order. Councilman Fawcett.
Move to approve, ma'am.
Motion for approval, Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Goldberg.
Second, Mayor.
Second. From Councilman Goldberg, any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We're now move to approval in the minutes from the December 1st, 2021 Work Session in Regular Meeting, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Johnson.
Move to approve.
Motion for approval, Councilman Johnson and Vice Mayor Bennett.
Second.
Second. For Vice Mayor Bennett, any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have no special presentations this morning, if it's after this evening. At this time, we will consider removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wished to vote on a specific item separately and a motion would be required. If there are any items that members of City Council wish to remove from consent agenda to be voted on separately, a motion would be appropriate at this time. Hearing none, a motion would be in order. Vice Mayor Bennett.
Move to approve.
Motion for approval from Vice Mayor Bennett and Councilman Goldberg.
Second, Mayor.
Second. From Councilman Goldberg, any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Madam Clerk, are there any agenda speakers at this time?
No, Mayor Doeman.
Madam Clerk, please present the items for consideration.
Item number seven, an ordinance to grant and appropriate a Walmart community grant for the City of Suffolk Sheriff's Department. Item number eight, an ordinance to accept and appropriate state and federal funds for Suffolk Public Schools. Item number nine, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Aviation for the Suffolk Executive Airport. Item number 10, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Library of Virginia through the American Rescue Plan Act for the Suffolk Public Library. Item number 11, an ordinance to appropriate funds from the fleet management unrestricted net position to the fiscal year 2021, 2022 fleet management fund budget in an amount not to exceed $350,000. Item number 12, an ordinance to amend Chapter 82, Article 20, Division 2, Section 82-901 of the City Code concerning distillery, brewery, bottler, beer, and wine license taxes. Item number 13, a resolution authorizing an application for federal funding assistance from the United States Department of Transportation Federal Transit Administration for the low or no emission competitive program. Item number 14, a resolution authorizing an application for federal fund assistance from the United States Department of Transportation Federal Transit Administration for the buses and buses facilities competitive program. And item number 15, a resolution to accept a donation of personal property for the Suffolk Department of Fire and Rescue.
Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. In regards to item seven, the city has received $2,000 from Walmart in support of the Suffolk Sheriff's Department Outreach Program. Funding will be used to purchase supplies. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues expenditures of the consolidated grant fund by $2,000 and there's no local match. Item eight, Suffolk Public Schools has received additional state and federal funding in an amount of $4,112,202.86. The funds will be used for replacement Chromebooks, instructional supplies for learning recovery, security camera equipment, training, and professional development for teachers, curriculum realignment due to COVID closures, and leveled reading materials. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the FY2122 schools operating fund budget by $4,112,202.86. No local match is required. In regards to item nine, the city has received $5,526.84 from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Aviation in support of Suffolk Executive Airport. The funding will be used to assist the repairs of the automated weather observation system, sealometer, circuit board. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues expenditures of the aviation facilities fund budget by $5,526.84. There is a local match of $290.89 is required, which is provided by the FY2122 aviation facilities fund budget. In regards to item 10, the city has received $23,331 in ARPA funds from the Library of Virginia in support of the Suffolk Public Library. The funding will be used to purchase digital library content. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues expenditures of the consolidated grants fund by $23,331. There's no local match. In regards to item 11, is an ordinance to appropriate funds in an amount of not to exceed $350,000 from the fleet management fund unrestricted net position to the FY2122 fleet management fund budget. Funding is required to cover projected fuel purchases through the end of the fiscal year due to continued increases in gasoline and diesel fuel prices. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues expenditures of the FY2122 fleet management fund budget up to $350,000. In regards to item 12, it's an ordinance which amends Chapter 82, Article 20, Division 2, Section 82-901 of the City Code concerning distillers, brewery, bottlers, beer, and wine license taxes. Purchase of the amendment is to align the City Code with the Virginia Code. In regards to item 13, it's a resolution providing authorization to the city manager to make application for federal funding assistance from the US Department of Transportation Federal Transit Administration's Low or Low Emission Program in an amount of $565,000. If successful, the funding will be utilized for the acquisition of electric buses and charging stations. Local match of $90,400 is required, which is available in the Transit Restricted Fund balance. In regards to item 14, it's a resolution providing authorization to the city manager to make application for federal funding assistance from the US Department of Transportation Federal Transit Administration Buses or Bus Facilities Program in an amount of $2,500,000. If successful, the funding will be utilized to construct a Suffolk Transit Operation Facility. Local match of $250,000 is required, which is available in the Transit Operation Facility CIP Fund. Item 15, the city has received a donation of personal property from the Center of Veterinarian Expertise, a Suffolk business. The items being donated are nine mask kits for animals, one for each fire station, with a total value of $675. Adoption of the resolution is necessary to accept and record the donated personal property for the operation of Suffolk Department of Fire and Rescue.
If there are no questions about the items, a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett.
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the agenda as presented.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Vice Mayor Bennett.
Second motion.
Got a second from Vice Mayor Bennett. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have no public hearings this evening. We're now move to ordinances, and we have an ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the City of Suffolk in order to amend the previously approved proffered conditions for the Bennetts Creek Quarter Development. Zoning map 12, parcels 32 asterisk 1, 32 asterisk 2, 32 asterisk 3, 32 asterisk 4, and 32 asterisk CH asterisk 1. Account numbers 306004377, 306004378, 306004379, 306004380, and 306004381. This is RZN 2022-04 conditional, and this item was removed at the request of the applicant at the April 6, 2022 City Council Meeting and continued from the May 18, 2022 City Council Meeting. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Kevin Wine, Interim Director of Planning and Community Development will provide staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As noted, this is an ordinance to amend existing proffers as it relates to the Bennetts Creek Quarter Development, which is located off of Shoulders Hill Road and is currently under construction. The property was originally rezoned in 2018. It was rezoned from RR Rural Residential to RU Residential Urban for the purpose of constructing 85 single-family detached homes, 142 single-family attached homes, and a combination of 190 quad and 10plexes, bringing the overall total to 417. The majority of development plans for this site, aside from the single-family residential detached, have been approved by staff, and that overall total is actually 405, a little less than what was originally approved through the rezoning. So, since it was approved in 2018, the associated proffers have been amended twice. Once in 2019 to remove a cash contribution for students generated at the elementary school level. Shortly after the rezoning, the site was reassigned from Northern Shores Elementary to Creekside, which at the time of the proffer amendment had adequate capacities to serve the rezoning. Additionally, in 2020, an amendment was approved to allow a temporary condition for Lakecock Lane, which serves the site from Shoulders Hill Road, to be only 60 feet in width until the issuance of certificate of occupancies for the 146th unit. At such time, the ultimate right of way would be 90 feet. So, in a very simplistic form, this is what the applicant is requesting amendment to. Proffer two currently speaks to that temporary condition of Lakecock Lane being 60 feet wide. They would like to remove that being a temporary condition. They have supplied us with a traffic impact assessment which speaks to it, which our Public Works Traffic Engineering Division has reviewed and agrees with. I'm going to skip past bullet, the second bullet here. I'll go to the last one. I'll come back. But proffer five speaks to the addition, is an addition, it's not there currently, and it speaks to the reimbursement of costs for Lakecock Lane, a turn lane from Shoulders Hill Road onto Lakecock Lane. That is new, and we believe that would be appropriate as we do have construction plans on Shoulders Hill Road. Coming back to the second bullet, this is proffer three, and this is requesting, well, we have new information. I'll get into that in a second. We got a new revised proffer statement earlier today. But originally, the applicant was seeking to increase the allowance of 111 townhomes or attached condo units to 303 units before completion of the Bridge Road/Shoulders Hill Road improvements. The original 111 townhomes came from consideration at the time of the original rezoning of the available level of service at that impacted intersection. That impacted intersection being the Bridge Road/Shoulders Hill Road intersection. That 111 townhomes or attached condo units is the equivalent of 68 single-family detached dwellings, and that's what the property could yield by right under its RR Rural Residential zoning, based upon the developable acreage. So with that being said, at the time, the city was able to recommend approval of it with that proffer intact, meaning that they would yield what they could by right on that property before those intersection improvements were made. The increase, the proposed increase in traffic on that intersection over that 111 townhomes does not align with what's available to the developer by right. And with the intersection improvements not being in place, staff is not in a position to recommend approval as it does not align with our adequate public facilities section of the Unified Development Ordinance. In a nutshell, the capacity was not there at the time of rezoning. The capacity is not there today because those improvements have not been constructed. Getting back to, and this may be slightly confusing, but today at about 3:00 PM, we did receive a revised proffer statement from the developer, dropping the request from 303 units to 186 units. So that is, that's a revised proffer statement, if you are so inclined to entertain that, that we do have what we need in regards to that proffer amendment. So with that being said, I think it's important to remind you that as this proffer amendment does not request a change to the use or density of a project, public hearing is not required, and this request comes directly to City Council without the benefit of a public hearing at Planning Commission. So with that being said, I can stand by for any comments or questions you may have.
Council questions, comments, or a motion. Councilman Fawcett.
First off, I want to talk a little bit about this project, because I was originally here on council when this project was in motion. And at the time that this project became and came in front of council, it was talked about, about what they could get by right and what the maximum he would accept, which he agreed upon in the documents here. Until such time, Shoulders Hill Road and Bridge Road improvements were come up, which would come up past Lakecock Lane, I believe, is what we intend on it to do. I don't know exactly how far. I think we were going up to maybe Creekside, if I'm not mistaken. Maybe Rob Lewis can speak more to this. The problem is, is the project's a good project that's being built there. There's no question. The problem is the traffic load. This was, at the time, said we would not go further than this many units until such time as the road corrections were made. Now, we all know that the road on Bridge Road and Shoulders Hill is not on schedule. It's behind. It's been behind probably by a couple of years. But at the time, the developers know that they're going to outpace the amount of structures they can build, knowing they're looking at the road conditions at the same time they're building, and therefore they're loading the road conditions even more so now than they have. You take, Lakecock Lane is a disaster to get out of at certain times of the day. People complain to me, "Well, we can't make a left to go to Bridge Road. The traffic is too dense there. At the time, we can't get out." "Well, we have to make a right turn. We don't want to go that way." Come up the street a little bit to Chesapeake Square, which is a senior most development, and you have the community right next to it, that the same developer built, by the way, both of those facilities. Well, you try to come out of that street, out of Bennetts Creek Square, and it's another impossible process. One, because Richard Bennett Parkway was never complete because everybody's dodged a bullet on who's going to do it. The traffic light has not been installed at that location. There was argument that they would put the traffic light, Lakecock Lane, but that didn't go well, and I fought that process as well because it wouldn't make sense to be able to take a left turn when we do the intersection down the Bridge Road that's going to load another traffic light within a few hundred feet. I think Mr. Lewis could speak to this very well. My problem is, is we have to slow down. Regardless of whether the developer agrees with me or not, we need to slow down the process of building these places until we can unload the traffic on that roadway. Now, I'm going to add another dimension to this. I happen to have a video of Amazon tractor trailers coming off of 664 on to Bridge Road, and I'm behind it. And he's making a left turn onto Shoulders Hill, and he's choked the traffic down because he can't make the 55-foot tractor trailer swing at the intersection. So now I have the traffic load of Amazon using Bridge Road to Shoulders Hill Road as an access to go into the facility. And I think Suffolk Meadows is now complaining with the same problem of the load coming down from the traffic, truck traffic going into Amazon. They're not using 664 to get off of Porson Boulevard, which would make more sense. That's why the road corrections were built back in the time before Amazon was put up. So my argument is here, and I had reservations about approving this, be based on the fact of the complaints that I got from the community right there, and I have two senior communities back to back right there. I have a senior community right across the street from Lakecock Lane, that those people are very agitated. are very agitated. This, add another equation to this coming forward. We got another developer who just put an application in to build on Shoulders Hill Road between Lakoc Lane and a little past Richard Bennett Parkway that's supposed to be developed. No one's told me who's going to build that roadway, which if that roadway was built going into this particular development here, the traffic could come out of that roadway and hit the traffic light, and then make a left and right safely to go either direction. So the point here tonight is where does this go? Because we're going to keep building and keep loading, and we can't take the heat of the traffic. As much as I love, and I very rarely ever go against a builder, I very rarely ever go against someone wanting to develop something, but there is better mechanisms in play when we do it in most cases. This is a disastrous project to put in play right now until that roadway is done. Even putting another 186, I think he wants to put, he's dropped to 186, is still too much on top of what's already there. He's got buildings in construction right now that are not complete, that haven't even been filled yet with traffic. Not even the 186 hasn't even been started. So I got a real issue with this. If the roadway was in better shape, and everybody was playing in the sandbox like we should be, Richard Bennett Parkway would be done with a light, which he doesn't want to pay, because he don't want to spring $450,000 for it. And there's a dispute between his idea and the develop, the person that owned the property, which is Leftgo and Saks, who's given rights to say, "Hey, you guys can put the roadway in. It isn't going to cost me nothing, and you can put a light up. It's not going to cost me nothing, and you can, I'll give you the right of way to do it," and the land. Nobody wants to alleviate the problem. Where and who is going to alleviate that problem? It's obvious that the Politano is not going to alleviate the problem. And it just breaks me to the core, because I support his developments in the past, and I've tried to think that he's got the right thing in mind, but he is outpacing us. He's going to outpace us. Most builders are going to outpace us. The road's probably about 20 months out. Probably, maybe Mr. Lewis can speak to this. I would prefer you to come up and justify that, Mr. Lewis, on what you think of the road conditions are going to be. And at this point right now, where do you think this load goes as it sits today?
Yes, sir. As far as the schedule on the project, we are finishing up acquisition of right of way, and that should be completed sometime a little bit later this summer, early fall. The project will then go to bid late fall, early winter, and we anticipate giving notice to proceed to start construction sometime early '23. As you've noted, it's about an 18-month period, so a year and a half out before the project would be completed.
I anticipate that this project's not complete. Mr. Wise, I think you might know that, that this 186 is just a short stop. Again, the agreement in here says that he agrees that this is all he's going to do until the road corrections are done. This is the same statement, if you go back in the body of this document, is the same statement he gave back when we started doing this project. So we go ahead now and give him 186 units, and he's going to have to come back and get the rest. He's not going to wait for the road. He's going to come back and get another ordinance on top of this one to get the additional units.
I can speak to that. In, in this proffer statement provided by the applicant, there's essentially a sunset clause. Once the intersection improvements are in place, he would no longer be restricted, and he would be able to build up to the 405 proposed units.
So there's no way that he can come back from this 186 as he's done before this, because he's made the same statement in the body. He would not go beyond the units he builds until such time as the road corrections are done. Now, he's come back asking for another variant proffer here in, in this particular ordinance to increase it. We know the market's hot, and we know he wants to build out as fast as he can to capture the market. He knows he's going to have competition in just a few months in the front. We know all this. The problem is, it hasn't alleviated the problem. My question is, is if he came back and got an ordinance for this after he made the statement before, what keeps him from coming back later? So we keep addressing this thing, and we keep kicking the can down the road. So I cannot justifiably approve this, because based on statements, when you say you're going to do something that you're willing to hold tight until the road corrections are done, and you take the risk on, knowing that you're probably going to build out faster than we can correct the road problems. And maybe that they can take another 186, and I think in the report it says they can take 103 on. It's ludicrous. Go out there. I sit in that neighborhood. I live there. I deal with it every day. My citizens out there deal with it every day. And I have to lift, listen to the constituents out there that enough's enough. Get a traffic light up. Get the road corrections done. Get them some relief. Build what you need to build. But this is not on the right track. And I was anticipating, right out of the gate, that I was not going to approve this because of what's in the body of this, what has been stated, and another statement of the same that says right in here. In his addition, his new proffer that he put out, that he does not intend to have any more construction on, until Shoulders Road, Bridge Road, construction, the road improvements are done. I find that hard to believe, just because he didn't follow through on this first statement. And I have a problem with that. And I, I'd take the same approach on anybody else that came up here. When you make a statement that you're going to do something, and then you want to circumvent the system, because you got an out. And this is exactly what this is. And I think the people of that neighborhood, that surrounds that neighborhood, including his, is, in his own admission to me in an email just the other day, that the traffic is coming through his neighborhood at high rates of speed from the adjacent neighborhood that's behind the library on Bennetts Passage Park Road, that development back there, that's been back there for a number of years, is now cutting through his property, because it's a shorter route to go out through his property to Lakoc Lane and try to bury a left turn to get out on the Bridge Road. So this has compounded even his own residents that are now living in his new neighborhood complaining to me about the traffic speed coming through that is not even in that neighborhood. So this thing, it just keeps another layer and another layer, and I'm sick of it. I'm sick of it. I don't agree with this project. If he holds his line, and he comes back when the road improvements are done, and he finishes project out, all well and good. But this is far from right, right now. And I anticipated maybe tonight I was going to lean toward helping him out and approving this, but the more I get into my crawl about when you say you're going to do something, you do it. That's what I'm talking about. And I will not have somebody circumvent the system with me sitting here, and I will not let my residents and my neighborhoods down. And it's not just my little neighborhood. It's everything coming from Bob White, coming from Deerfield, coming out of Steeplechase. All of that traffic's coming the same direction. You can't get out. So therefore, I am going to make a motion to deny his request tonight for this 186 units. I will not support this until such time as someone tells me about a traffic light, someone tells me about Bennett's Creek Park, I mean, Richard Bennett Parkway, and that roadway is corrected. And then we'll talk a little more about what's going to get built out there and what's not. I'm only one person on this council. I hope the rest of my council members will support this. This is the wrong timing. We don't need it. And only talks about 79% of the traffic rate, blah, blah, blah. Come out there and sit there. He doesn't live there. You don't live there. Some of you council people don't live there. I do live there, and I have citizens that live there that are very concerned, and they've had problems with near-traffic crashes and everything else from this traffic. We take a lot of traffic off of Bridge Road down Shoulders Hill Road. You may have a traffic count. I think you did a traffic count recently, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Lewis. I saw the traffic count strips in the roadway. Tell me that that traffic is not loaded on that roadway. I'm telling you what's going on here. So therefore, Mayor, tonight I am making a motion to disapprove the request.
At this point, we have a motion for denial. Council, questions, comments? Second. I mean, go ahead. I'm sorry. Let me get you hooked up here. Go ahead.
Can we ask others to come up and speak, like Mr. Politano?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, if I'm.
No, I'm.
So this, this application came before you under the UDO ordinance that allows staff to send it to you without a public hearing. Your two choices here is whether or not you have enough in the application to move forward on the application, or if there's not enough, to then set this for public hearing. It's, it's not really set up for, to take information, because everyone hasn't been put on notice. So those that are for and those that are against all haven't been given an opportunity to be present.
But we can ask questions of staff.
You can ask questions of staff.
Counselor.
Give me the totals again. How many more will be built?
How many more?
How more can be built?
How many more built, based upon the revised proffer statement you received today, that staff received today?
Right here, right now.
Would be, would be 75 additional units over what they are permitted now.
75?
Yes. Because they're permitted for 111 right now.
Right.
They're asking to increase that 111 to 186. Yes, sir.
So they're asking for 75 more?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson?
Kevin, in addition to that, once the intersection is built, how many additional units are that they can go in after that point?
The, the project as proposed would have 405 units total.
Total? And what have we already, what is he already built there?
We have released, I believe it, these are rough figures, but 26 certificate of occupancies, but they are well on their way with buildings under construction to get to that 111 number, as we stand.
My comment, Mr. Mayor, while I'm on the phone here, when this came before us, my immediate reaction to it was a total agreement with Mr. Foster, because I, I felt like there was just too many units being built to come into an intersection that's not ready for it. But after talking and listening, there, there is some urgency on the part of the developer. I'm, I'm making the assumption, because of the market being where it is, and conditions being what they are, and the fact that he does want to complete, complete this development, and I too want to see the development complete. I, I, I agree with Roger 100% that we don't want any more traffic on this road than we can stand, but what would the actual numbers be as far as, how much more traffic is, if we allow him to go forward with what he's asking, how much more actual traffic is it going to be on the road? Maybe that's for Robert. Is it going to increase significantly enough that we are going to see so much more of a problem?
As a general rule, when we talk about single-family homes, again, there's a little bit of nuances in there, if it's attached and so forth, but generally, you can figure about 10 trips per day per home. So 75 homes would generate an additional 750 trips a day, generally.
Which could be significant on a road that's like this, correct? I mean.
Yes, sir.
It could be significant.
It could be.
Okay. I'll, I'm going to keep thinking.
Counsel, Councilman Fawcett, this is your.
I want to come back to one thing, Robert, if we could. And you just alluded to this would be a significant more amount of traffic on that roadway, which is the one-lane road to begin with. The point here I want to make is, once this construction starts, that's going to impact the roadway even more so. There's no way you're going to do construction there that's not going to impact the travel on Shoulders Hill Road, because somewhere has got to give when you get to the one lane. So I'm asking you, do you feel at this point that the amount of additional trips, along with the road construction, that's going to be monumental to get that road construction through there with that busy road as it is? Because you've got to find a way to feed that traffic off Bridge on the Shoulders Hill somehow. So it just compounds the problem even more so for those adjacent neighborhoods to be able to find ways to maneuver the traffic flow, as well as the construction load that's going to be there to make that, because that's going to be a major construction project. It's not going to be a small little indication of a road problem there to be fixed. Elaborate on a little bit about what I'm saying here, that this is, this is going to be an issue under construction.
Again, you will note that staff has reviewed the TIA and did not concur with the recommendations of that in the findings of that TIA, and therefore, we were recommending denial because of that. As a general rule, every traffic, every vehicle that drives through there every day is more and more challenged as we do construction. As you've alluded to, I was recently in that intersection at 5:01 even, having been up at VDOT. Today, it is very congested as it exists, and certainly, as construction comes on, it will become more and more of a challenge. Can we work through it? We will do whatever we have to do to build a road. We'll be inconvenienced, people, either way, absolutely. Again, I would leave that to your judgment as to whether we're creating more disturbance or not with the additional traffic, but it, it certainly will be a challenge.
I, I can see it being a challenge, and you can't discount that you've got a major shopping center hooked right to it, which is a very big shopping center, and it's very busy there with Harris Teeter. A lot of people use that facility to shop. Those seniors that are in that area go to that shopping center, because it's very close proximity to where they live.
Yes, sir.
So we're going to impact even the load more so with the shopping center on top of it. And that's a very busy, busy shopping center at this stage. So I'm just having a real problem understanding why anybody would want to do anything at this point until such time as we get a little relief and we get some road corrections there, and then we can proceed forward and do things. I have all the sympathy in the world about market, market this, market that. Yeah, the housing market's good everywhere, but it's not my risk, and it's not at the risk of the residents. And therefore, the burden of the risk goes on the developer, not on the city, or not on me, or the citizens shouldn't have to take it. So this is my argument tonight with this project. And any other project that's going to come forward in the And any other project that's going to come forward in the next few months, which is coming, trust me, it's in the pipeline. So we've got to get our heads together. I would wish the developer would have pulled this project until such time as the developer that's going to do the front of Shoulders Hill. Maybe they could have got together and worked something out with the Bennett's Creek Park, Bennett's, Richard Bennett's Parkway in that intersection there would have made a whole lot simpler than come back and get his approval for additional units because we're going to pit one against the other here shortly. We approve this, then the next one coming in, we're going to wind up having to do the same thing for him because we just did one. So I, I see what's coming here. And the people up here on this diocese need to take a look at this and say, hey, let's, let's go along, step back here and, and let this settle in, and then we go forward because this is a very, very tough road to maneuver right now. It's one lane, coming and going. So it's just too difficult. So that's, that's my argument. May I leave it at that tonight?
Okay, I don't see any other requests. I want to go ahead and comment at this time, and then we'll move forward and see if we can get a second, a substitute motion, or whatever it is that we're going to do. This is not an easy decision. There's several factors to, that deserved to be considered. Some of it's data-driven. Some of it has to do with the timing of the project and what was anticipated. When I originally looked at the first proposal, which was to go from 111 to 405. Now, keep in mind, 111 is a done deal. We're not approving 186. You approve in 75. 111 is by right, absolutely by right. 111 to 405, I had, I mean, it wasn't even a consideration because I, I am aware, I don't travel it that much, but I do go to Harris Teeter, and, and I know that that intersection is an issue. And I've had multiple conversations with Mr. Lewis and the manager as to completion. We can, when this was originally considered, we were supposed to start delivery in May of 2020. Now, there is no guarantee. When you're in business, and I had this conversation with Mr. Palatano, I told him the same thing. When you're in business, when I'm in business, anybody in business, there's no guarantees. I mean, you're gambling. I go to work, I don't know if I'm going to lose 10 grand or make 20 grand or whatever. But there has to be a reasonable, reasonable anticipation of certain things coming to, to fruition based on the information that you're given. So from that standpoint, I don't believe that the developer at this point just said, I'm going to outpace everybody, and then I'm going to try to jam this and make it happen. We were talking about a 20, a May 2nd, 2020 start delivery versus a March 22. So in all fairness, there's, there has been almost a, a two-year delay. Another consideration is, is this project going to happen? Some of the things are just on the table. I'm still waiting for Crittenon Road to get straightened out. Been messing with that for about 10 years now. And, you know, we, we're getting there, but we've already been through the engineering. It was my understanding that the right-of-way was done, or at least according to what we talked about, I think Councilman Fawcett asked that question earlier at the work session, and right-of-way was done. So I'm assuming that right-of-way is done. And I see you shaking your head. So that's not out there. So now, the only thing we're talking about is putting it out for bid and getting it done, if I'm not mistaken. So it's going to happen, and it's going to start, and it is going to come to fruition. Now, the timing for it to be perfect, 18 months from now, we need to be having this conversation, but the reality of it is, you know, we're not. So even when we, the, even when it went from 405 to 303, that's 192 more, more units. That's a lot. That's a significant difference. 192 more units, even though it seems like a lot, equates to 1.5% of the total traffic going through that intersection, 1.5%, if I'm not mistaken. So I didn't have really a lot about that either. So now we're down to 186. 186 is 75 additional homes. 75 additional homes, if I did my math correctly, will have an impact of 0.59%. So less than six tenths of 1% on the traffic. And those homes will still have to be built out. They're all not going to pop out of the ground at one time. So my way of thinking is, it, it would be nice if it was all done. And as far as starting anything else, then we have to have this discussion again. We're talking about going from 111 to 186. So the idea that all of a sudden, when the 186 is going to be here, and we're going to allow the developer to run back up here, and we're automatically going to approve some more? I mean, from my standpoint, and you put it on record, I can't see doing any more until that thing is done, done, done. But in this particular case, when we're only talking about 75 units, and that 75 has already been permitted, and he's in a position to move forward with those, and the additional proffer that we've got for Lakecock Lane, you know, I, I don't have a problem with an additional 75. I couldn't stomach any more than that. But I think 75, that has a net result of less than six tenths of 1% of the traffic, and six tenths is too much. And taking into consideration that there has been a two-year delay, um, like I said, from my position, I don't have a problem with the 75. I'm not doing 192, I'm not doing 30, well, almost 300 more, 294 on the original, because this, this project is actually approved for, for 405 units total, once Shoulders Hill Road is done. So, you know, it's kind of there. And yes, it's going to be a little bit to contend with, but I don't think it's going to be such a burden that we have really, really, really put a hardship on those going up and down Shoulders Hill Road. It's not a perfect scenario, but I don't think the impact's going to be that much, just based on the numbers, based on the actual numbers, not my gut thought, but 0.59%. That's what it comes out to, 175 homes for total. So that's just my two cents worth. At this time, we have a motion for denial on the floor from Councilman Fawcett. We do not have a second. Are there any other questions or comments or a motion? Councilman Goldberg?
If we were to make a substitute motion, is that in present now to do that? Then I would make a substitute motion.
Well, actually, no, you would become the first motion because we don't have a second.
I could, okay.
The city attorney was getting ready to correct me. I saw the look on his face, but I got it. We had no second, so it would be a motion, not a, not a substitute motion. Give me a couple more years, I get the hang of this. So you would be making a motion if you'd like to. All right, let me get you turned back on again. Okay, we got, wait a minute, we got Councilman Goldberg.
In all respect for Councilman Fawcett and, and for his, his discussion tonight, in which I understand his plea, I understand that completely. But I believe that the 75 additional would not put an overburden, even though we're, eventually, we're going to allow 105. And, and...
405.
100, 100, 405, I mean, no, 405. And the fact that the city is moving forward on building the road, then I would move forward along with this, with this offer, this proffer that has been given to, move forward with the, with the proffer, yes.
So your motion would be to approve the ordinance with the amendments?
With the amendments, yes, sir.
Okay, we have Councilman Williams.
I second that.
Have a second from Councilman Williams. Is there any further discussion of the motion? All right, we have a motion on the floor for acceptance of the ordinance as presented with the amendments. Hearing no more discussion, council members prepare to vote.
Just to clarify, that is an amendment to proffer three and proffers one, two, and four as presented, just for the safety of...
I believe that's right.
Awesome.
Limited to 186, the Lakecock Lane, and yes, one, one, two, three, and five. Proffer changes. All righty, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to one, with Councilmember Fawcett voting in opposition.
All righty, we will now move to get to the next page here. We have no resolutions this evening. We do have several staff reports, and our first staff report is regarding affordable housing. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Kevin Wine, interim director of planning and community development, would give the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, the mayor, vice mayor, members of council. I'm going to give you hopefully a brief update this evening to present an overview on affordable housing. It's something that's really important to the city, certainly the comprehensive plan speaks directly to it often, early and often. In fact, we have an entire chapter dedicated to housing, and the recurring theme is how do we increase the amount of affordable housing we have? So this evening, I'm going to touch on what affordable housing is. There, there are some definitions. I know it's, it's kind of relative, but there are definitions established by HUD on what that is, the comprehensive plan, and how it talks about affordable housing, the city's current ordinance. We actually do have a current ordinance on the books that attempts to incentivize development of affordable housing stock. I'll get into some of the shortcomings with that. I'm going to outline some of the discussion that we have had with stakeholders, both from the private development side and our, our friends over at the Suffolk redevelopment Housing Authority, and engage some of their ideas. And we, I'll touch on some of the, the current developments that we have in queue that are actually utilizing low-income housing tax credits to come to fruition. And lastly, I'll touch on the next steps, where we go from here, and hopefully have some good discussion. So with that being said, here we go. What, what is affordable housing? I think that's kind of the first part of this, and affordable housing is tied to the federal housing and urban development's annual median income for a metropolitan area. We are a part of Hampton Roads, so in Hampton Roads, for a family of four, that median income is $93,500. Low income is 80% of that. So if you're at 80% of the median income, and this, this, mind you, is for a family of four, there is, there's a step to this. If you're a, a single person, that number's lower, and the more family members you have, that number increases. So very low income is defined as 50% of the median metro income, and that is $46,750. Extremely low income, which is 30%, and it's not on my slide here, which is 30% of the median household income for the metro areas, $28,500. And it's important to understand that because a lot of the, the types of products I'm going to be talking about is tied to being extremely low income, certainly lower than very low income. Sometimes it's tied to 40%, sometimes it's tied to 30%. So there are a couple programs who are probably familiar with Section 8 Housing Choice vouchers. That's something that the private landlords participate in by, through their acceptance of it. And that program is kind of built on fair market rates. So it's what makes housing affordable, right? So HUD annually establishes these fair market rates. Once again, this is the average monthly cost of affordable housing rents for a given metro area. And generally, they'll range between, what they'll offer is between 90 and 110% of that on a voucher. For Suffolk, for a one-bedroom, that is $1,015 per month as of 2022. For a two-bedroom, it increases to $1,193, and then for a three-bedroom, it increases quite drastically to $1,676. So folks who receive housing vouchers, the amount a recipient pays is based upon their income. However, voucher recipients must pay a minimum of 30% of their monthly income towards housing and utilities. So I noted that the comprehensive plan is consistent with it, it's mentioning of affordable housing and the need to increase stock throughout the city. In fact, there are five policy actions alone that are dedicated solely to increasing the supply of a decent, affordable housing stock. Chapter six of the plan speaks to housing, of which the increase in affordable housing is the most dominant theme, and that's throughout the city. The comprehensive plan does start with this. I mentioned we do have a, an ordinance for affordable dwelling units. It's an incentive ordinance that, up to this point, has not been utilized. In fact, the comprehensive plan states that, to date, it has not been successful. The biggest challenge with the program remains in integrating affordable housing in new construction projects, and that the program allows developers with an option of setting aside affordable units in exchange for granting a bonus density. That bonus density is 30%. To date, and our ordinance was adopted in 1998, 1999, no, no one has utilized this section of the ordinance. Obviously, that means that it's not effective, it's not working. So we're looking at ways to identify, ways to put together some sort of ordinance that developers find useful for achieving an increase in density on their projects and making their projects fruitful. So as I noted, our current ordinance does allow for a bonus of up to 30% for affordable housing developments. What is affordable housing? It's very low-income housing, low-income housing, or moderate-income housing. That's how our ordinance defines it. Touching on what low income was earlier, that's 80%. Very low is 50%, and then you get into the extremely low income, that's 30% of the median household income. So this is applicable to almost any development. You don't have to be a affordable housing development to, to participate in the allowance of, of this increase in density. However, you do have to have a component of your project that is reserved for affordable dwelling units. City council, in their consideration, your consideration, would consult with the Suffolk redevelopment housing authority to establish purchase and rental rates for this and explore other incentives, such as the waiver of development fees. And I'll touch on this in a minute because it was a recurring theme in our discussions with our stakeholders. So the density bonus can be approved at the time of rezoning or a conditional use permit, or administratively at the time of a, a development plan or subdivision plat with the director. Applications are afforded expedited review, that's 280 days. Once again, that's relative, whether that's expeditious or not, depends on the complexity of a plan. Phasing requirements, we need to understand so that, so that these are a mix of units. You want to ensure that each phase of the development has some sort of affordable aspect to it. So it's important to, to put some controls in place that regulate that component, ensuring that if you're going to have 20 developments, or 20 units open up in this phase, that a good percentage of those are, in fact, affordable, not allowing private development of market-rate units at the front, and then you may never realize those affordable dwelling units. So issues, and I kind of touched on this probably in my explanation, but the calculation for getting to a bonus density is quite confusing, quite convoluted. I'll save you from getting into the nuts and bolts of it, but that's one of the reasons this hasn't been, been effective at this point. I noted there are several agencies involved. Not one is really leading the charge, and that, that's because city councils noted as, as kind of being the administrator of it. Suffolk redevelopment and housing authority has a role, and then on the staff side, planning is kind of the mediator of it all. Enforcement is a real issue. Once we, once the units come online... Once we, once the units come online, how do we ensure that they're being rented at affordable rates? That's not something that's outlined currently. So those are some of the real challenges with our current ordinance. I noted that we, over the last several months, we had the opportunity to sit down with some stakeholders. One of those included affordable housing developers. It's quite a niche market. These folks primarily develop through the low-income housing tax credit process, which is administered by the Virginia Housing and Development Authority through a program with the Federal Department of Treasury. This basically allows them to get some tax relief on their income taxes through the development of these projects. It's a very competitive process. Annually, I believe, decisions are made in March by VHDA. They're ranked, they're super competitive. Suffolk does have a few successful projects that have come out of that. I'll touch on those at the end of this presentation. But finding ways, identifying ways to increase the score of these applications that go before the Virginia Housing Development Authority is kind of at the heart of the issue, because if they're scoring better, they're going to get their low-income housing tax credits, and these projects can come to fruition. So we need to identify ways to do that. And one of the ways we've done that, and you have seen this in the past, when you'll adopt a resolution kind of supporting some of these projects, that helps these projects score quite well, at least as a component of that overall score. The largest recurring theme, aside from being monetary, is the need for zoned land. These developers in a lot of ways are, they don't have the ability to seek rezonings like private developers do, because the process that they go through essentially requires zoned land. And there's not a lot of land out there that is just zoned appropriately right now for this type of development. Most of it's been built out. They noted that the waiver of expensive fees, particularly water and sewer taps, are quite costly and certainly a deterrent. Adequate public facilities, with any rezoning we've ever considered, adequate public facilities tends to be at the core, whether that's traffic or schools. And the margins are pretty small on these projects, meaning that the developer does not have the ability to incur cash contributions to those. They talked about financial assistance or tax abatement, ability to get some low-interest loans perhaps, or expedited review. And lastly, they noted that it would be nice to have a local cost share with Right of Way and Utilities. So we also met with Suffolk redevelopment housing authority, learned some information. I think that's, was certainly to the benefit of the city here, but, and it was certainly my surprise that they only are the landlord for 260 units in the city. And that includes a couple of projects. Corey Park Apartments, I believe, Hoffler Apartments, and the last one's escaping me, but there are only three apartment communities that they are actually the landlord for. Colander Bishop Apartments, that was the other one. Hoffler Apartments has 80 units, Colander Bishop has 80, and Corey Park Apartments down the road on West Washington has 100 units. So those are the complexes that they manage and are the landlord. They're primarily in the Section Eight voucher distribution game. And in fact, they issue about 1,000 Section Eight vouchers annually, and they have a waiting list for 4,000 applicants on their waiting list. They also too noted that our tap fees are quite high and certainly a deterrent for their, for their projects. To note, and now that we know what this means, 75% of the voucher applicants that they work with in their program must be extremely low income. And once again, for a family of four in Suffolk, that is $28,500, extremely low income for a family of four. And all of their applicants must be less than 40% of the median income. So these are, these are below your low income. These are very low income and extremely low income individuals. So we do have a couple of projects that we're able to offer some local assistance on that we wanted to bring to your attention, one being the Oak Terrace Development. That's going to be located on Portsmouth Boulevard. This is 120-unit multifamily project. It's going to consist of 72 two-bedrooms and 48 three-bedrooms, and this is not far from downtown here. We are proposing to use $500,000 of the Suffolk's Community Development Block grant funding to assist the developer in the purchase of the property in order for this project to advance. Another one right down the road is Saratoga Place. This is actually on the site at Peanut Crossing. This is a 76-unit multifamily development, of which 40 of those would be two-bedrooms and 36 would be three-bedrooms. The city's proposing putting $300,000 on this project from our Community Development Block funding to assist the developer in the purchase of the property in order for the project to advance. So moving forward, I think I attempted to make the case that we need to improve the current, current ordinance on density bonus to really make it more achievable, more practical, find something that works. And bottom line, it's complicated. We've, we've had a lot of conversations with our committee on ordinances over the last several months on trying to figure this one out. We've looked to some localities who are far ahead of us, primarily Northern Virginia localities and what they do. Some are more complex, some are much more attainable for us, so we'll be continuing to work with the committee on ordinances to, to rectify our current shortcomings and find, find a way to, to get something in place that works for Suffolk. We'll continue to provide assistance to affordable housing projects with our existing resources, as I noted, through the Community Development Block grant funding process. There's a great deal of leeway that the city has to allocate those funds on projects. We'll continue to monitor the affordable housing trends here in Suffolk and, and the impacts of it. When projects do come up, we're certainly listening and trying to identify ways to help them come across the finish line. And lastly, we'll continue to explore additional funding considerations for new programs. That's kind of where it gets a little bit more complicated, things like land banks and tax abatement, things of that nature. So with that being said, that concludes my presentation. I can stand by for any questions the city council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Council, questions or comments? Oh, mine's clear. All right, thank you very much. Our next staff report is a public safety update. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Police Chief Alfred Chandler will provide
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and Members of Council, for the next few moments, I'd like to provide an overview of some of the security-related aspects of our city. This is really just a quick snapshot of some of the major incidents and concerns in Suffolk, and I'm also going to provide you with some basic information on how we are working to combat these issues. We'll start with the homicides in our city. This map contains homicides from 2021, represented with red pins, and 2022, represented with yellow pins. You will see the largest cluster of activity is in our downtown area. Through investigation, we found connections in some of the homicides, as well as some of the shootings and brandishing of firearms that have been reported throughout our city. As we continue to investigate these incidents, we are, we are learning more about the involved offenders and their motives. Some of these motives, we believe, stem from gang revenge. Therefore, as the shootings and killings have continued, we seem to have more offenders joining in to seek retribution for past crimes. We are combating this trend mainly through aggressive, street-level proactive patrolling. We are also working to investigate locations frequented by these individuals, identifying and conducting multiple surveillance operations to develop more evidence and information. We continue to investigate these cases from every possible angle and have been having some success with identifying and arresting involved individuals. Our main challenges, our main challenges are victims who refuse to assist in the investigation or the prosecution of their case. We are currently working with the Office of the Commonwealth's Attorney to develop some better strategies to prosecute cases without cooperating victims. These cases are more difficult to prosecute, but I believe we can get this done. Another challenge is the lack of eyewitness, eyewitnesses coming forward, willing to go on record and testify in court. We have numerous citizens willing to provide us with important information. However, most will not agree to come to court and testify. We're working through this challenge by focusing on the evidentiary opportunities in each case, which brings us to our third major challenge, the evidence processing backlog due to the elevated crime all over the area, not just in Suffolk, but in the entire Hampton Roads area and in the Commonwealth of Virginia. The crime labs are experiencing backlogs. We process as much evidence as we possibly can in-house at our, at our labs here in Suffolk, and the great staff at, at the crime lab are doing the hard work that it takes to get through the backlogs, but it takes time. Despite these challenges, we're still having some success with bringing offenders to justice. We have worked feverishly to investigate those believed to be involved, and if they are found to have unrelated active arrest warrants, we have placed great emphasis on locating and arresting those, arresting them on those unrelated charges. This information was provided by criminal, I'm sorry, by crime analysis units from each city. Looking at 2021 for the entire year around Hampton Roads, you can see that Suffolk had the lowest number of reported crimes in six of the seven categories. As you can see, Suffolk maintains a low amount of crime, but we must continue to be diligent and aggressive when it comes to fighting criminal activity in our city. Through sharing information and jointly investigating crimes with, with our colleagues of other jurisdictions, we have found numerous incidents involving actors who are committing crimes in multiple cities. Criminal activity is mobile. We continue to work together to find and bring these law violators to justice. Now looking more specifically to our city, this slide shows crime numbers from January 1st to May 30th of 2021, and then that same time period for this year. The greatest change that you see is in the number of homicides this year. This is of course a concern, a major concern, because preservation of life is what's most important. All of our homicides from 2021 and 2022 have been done through the use of firearms. Therefore, we have been placing specific interest in investigating how these offenders, many of them underage, are obtaining these weapons. Moving on, the, I would like to point out that the, the reported rapes are down, reported robberies are slightly up, aggravated assaults are up, but it should be noted that as of September of last year, our reporting practice has changed to comply with federal and state requirements, making brandishing a firearm an aggravated assault. Therefore, the 2022 numbers include incidents in which a firearm was displayed, but there was no physical harm or act of violence. Those cases were not included in the 2021 numbers, totals. Larceny's are slightly up, and arsons have declined thus far this year. So our response, there are a number of things that we are working on for the future, but for the purpose of today's conversation, I would like to focus on what's being done right now. The main focus on our response is what I call MUD, maximum uniform deployment. This is a strategic surge operation that is a data-driven strategy. Coupled with data, coupling data with investigative information, we are using strict interdiction and enforcement tactics. This is accomplished by using a mixture of marked cars, unmarked cars, undercover vehicles, surveillance equipment, and foot patrols to provide immediate impact to the targeted areas. To staff this effort, we redirected staff efforts through the use of mandatory overtime. This is an all-hands-on-deck approach, requiring everyone on the team to pitch in and help. Along with investigating identified individuals, we are also investigating the guns used and their origin. We are also working with other jurisdictions on related investigations, as well as obtaining assistance and resources from our state and federal partners. And of course, our citizen partners are continuing to provide very important leads to assist in keeping Suffolk safe. Our neighborhood enforcement team, our gang unit, is taking the lead on the proactive enforcement, and they are being heavily supported by our special investigations unit, our special operations unit, our school resource officers, administrative division, and our warrant bureau. That is all I have for now, and I will be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Council, questions or comments? Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I appreciate this update, and I appreciate your effort of doing what's necessary to keep our community safe and to find out where, where the crime is happening and to do something about it. I appreciate your effort on doing so. I'm also very much aware of you personally being out there on the job. I was informed of that just the other day, and I appreciate your effort in doing exactly what, what we need to do to keep our community safe. So thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Thank you, Mayor. I also would just like to comment, commend you and your staff on the job that you all are doing, really solving these crimes so quick and getting some results. I know that we have cameras ordered, and I'm hearing a lot of people saying, where are the cameras? I said, just stand by, we're getting them. So that's the other thing, I think we'd be happy when we'd be able to get those cameras and put them in some of those high-crime areas, areas that you feel that need to be where, and you can't have a police officer there, but that camera will be there to identify and work with you all. Great job, appreciate it, and keep up to your staff and all, and all the patrolmen, men and women. Thanks for everything they do.
Thank you. Council, are there any other questions or comments? Councilman Williams?
Yes, Chief. I'd like to also say to you and your staff, we here on the DAS support you, and our police department, our first responders, you're doing a great job. Continue to do what you're doing. I just have one question. With the buy-back program, based on your conversations, if you had conversations with other police chiefs in the region, how does that work? Is it successful?
I don't think it's a bad thing to do. So we are, and I have been talking to an organization that does gun buy-back programs, and we're already starting to work on, there's some legislation that's required to present to you all that we've already kind of started down the road to get hot on and make that happen.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Ward?
Let me ask you, do we have a witness protection program?
Not, not per se. Now, we do have some options and some opportunities that if, if it's something that large, generally, that's not at the, the city government position.
Would that help if you had something, you couldn't do witnesses or somebody to testify against somebody?
Well, generally, if you're talking about a witness protection, you're talking about a, a specific individual. What we have now is, most of these shootings that have occurred, there are multiple witnesses. There are many witnesses. Even, even down to the victims themselves are not, they refuse to speak, and this is not always... Even down to the victims themselves are not, they refuse to speak, and this is not always a "I am afraid to speak," sometimes it's just culturally, we, you know, have kind of developed a culture where people don't speak to police, and oftentimes even if that is, you know, that individual or a loved one of that individual or their friends. So we just have to continue to move methodically through the investigation, and as we continue to move through the investigation, you know, obviously we have ways of still making cases as we're still making them, but it just takes time.
It was impressive to see the numbers that you just showed, and like I said, keep up the good work.
Counsel, are there any other questions or comments for the chief? Chief, thank you very much for your presentation. I think this is something we intend on doing on a regular basis. I think it's absolutely imperative that we keep our citizens informed as to basically, what you have to contend with, how we're addressing the situation. We do have some other initiatives that will be coming forward, hopefully within the next week or so. Some of it has to, I don't want to put it all out there because we really hadn't got it firmed up yet, but at your suggestion, one of the things you brought up was actually dividing the city into seventeen precincts, because you have seventeen precincts, if I'm not mistaken, that was the number.
Thirteen, I think it's seventeen, yes.
Throughout, seventeen precincts throughout the city, which is how your force is distributed. And it's also distributed based on a lot of what you just put up on the screen, where it's needed. So that may be a good way to start as far as how we get representation and communicate with our citizens. I mean, I want you to know that everybody that I've talked to, there's been, in my feeble opinion, especially in the last twelve to eighteen months, I think a lot of the public has done a 180 as to how they perceive our law enforcement personnel. Right now, what I'm hearing is, do what you need to do, make it happen, you know, everybody's, you know, I won't say dodging bullets, but the point is, I believe, I honestly believe, I know that this administration, and I know that this council support you 100% and are willing to give you anything we possibly can as far as resources for you and your men to do your job. And I wholeheartedly believe that the vast majority of our citizens also support you. So I want you to know, and I want you to relay that message to your officers, they don't have to be looking over their shoulder all the time. They have our support, they have our citizens' support, and it's not going to be an overnight thing. You know, I know a lot of the, you know, when we talk about gang violence, when you've got individuals coming from other localities, you know, there's not much you can do about that. And I know one of the incidents, even if you had a cop on every corner, as they say, I believe one of the instances downtown, it wasn't, long before that, there was an officer there. So our citizens need to be involved. Our citizens have to be involved. If you want change, you need to be part of that change. You can't be, we can't be everywhere all the time. And I'm looking forward to the strides that we're going to make. We are still, in my opinion, and based on those numbers that you put up there, I'm kind of a data guy, based on the numbers, we're in a pretty enviable position compared to some of the other localities, especially some of the localities with very, very similar demographics that we have. And lots of times, when I look at comparisons, you want to look at demographics. And we are absolutely hands, I don't, knock on wood, knock on, I don't want anything to happen to change that. So thank you for everything that you do, and we're behind you 100%.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're now going to move to motions. We do have a motion to schedule a public hearing to be held on June 15th, 2022, to receive public comment on the non-exclusive master lease agreement with the Southside Network Authority. And a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Motion approved.
And Councilman Goldberg. We have a motion and a second from Councilman Goldberg. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, June 1st, 2022, at 4:00 p.m. I don't think that's, oh, let's see, that would be June 15th?
June 15th.
Okay, there we go. We got a little clerical error. June 15th, 2022, at 4:00 p.m., unless canceled, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Johnson?
So moved.
Motion for approval, Councilman Johnson. Councilman Williams?
Second.
A second from Councilman Williams. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers at this time? And if so, please explain the timing system.
There are speakers this evening registered for this portion of the agenda. Each person participating under the item entitled "Non-Agenda Speakers" shall limit their remarks to the services policies and affairs of city government, and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Each speaker appearing before city council will not be allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, use profanity, or engage in personal attacks. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is Pamela Ward, 114 Nancy Drive, representing self regarding public Our next speaker is Roosevelt Jones, 5809 Hawk Lane, representing self regarding unmetored water bills in Chukatack.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, all constituents. I come to you tonight with civil matter that I hope that we can resolve as quickly as possible. I live in the, it's like I say, I live in the Chukatack area, and we have what you call unmet water. We have muted water and unmet water. Back during the early 50s, the pioneers of Chukatack installed our own water system. Bob White from 5900 Giron Boulevard, he supplied the other half. So in the Oakland section of Chukatack, we had our own system, and we ran that system for years, until back in, I'd say around about the 20s, they came up with things that the water had too much chlorine in it. And when Suffolk took it over, they haven't did a thing. We haven't had meters or anything, we haven't had any adjustment to the water lines, et cetera. So I come to you tonight as a member in behalf at all from the Greater Oakland Chukatack City League, asking you to cease and de-cease from this and make things right. Several of us last month of May received water bill at $74.50. Muted, people had prices ranging from $26 to $30. And I'm going to look you all in your eyes, you tell me what is the difference? Now, how in the world can you say that we owe $74.50 without meters? People that doesn't even live in a home receive those bills? And I followed protocol. I went through all of your associations that you had in Suffolk, questioned this. They say it was council matters. So I'm bringing it to you tonight, and we need things done for this. We need meters. You know, and I'm sitting here tonight, this is all this development, and we've been out here as pioneers, the Jacksons, the Wilsons, the Hargroves, the Smiths, the Turners, we have, and all those peoples have passed on. By me being a youth, I would always follow to see what these people was doing, and mentality, I recorded it. And since we have been involved with this, we need attention. You know, when I was a union representative, whenever I had problem, and when that problem was resolved, I could go to the label board. But when you bring problem to the city council and we don't get results, who do we go to? That's a question. That's a question. And I will be seated. Well, we are looking for some action, metered. It don't take you 30 years to put in water meters. It'll take you 30 years. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tammy Coker, 209 Walnut Street, representing self regarding
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm coming to you this evening with concerns in reference to the birdsong expansion project that was announced last week at the State of the City address. This information was concerning because I live in the neighborhood of birdsong. Birdsong produces a lot of peanut dust, okay? We all love peanuts, but that can be a health concern. There are other neighborhoods. I live in the Bogota neighborhood, there's the Orlando neighborhood, Bogota, Washington, Walnut Hill Estates in South Suffolk. The citizens were not taking into consideration with this expansion project right at our back door. I live on Walnut Street. Behind me is Maple Street. There were houses on Marlberry Street near Birdsong and Madison Avenue. All of those people that were living in those homes were forced out. Why were they forced out? So birdsong could grow. I don't think that's fair to the citizens. I have concerns here about the truck traffic. Has there been a study for this expansion for truck traffic? There are trucks that are now coming through the neighborhoods. They get in, they have a hard time getting out because the streets were not designed for those trucks. Has there been any studies on the truck traffic that will increase with this expansion? Has there been any studies about the peanut dust pollution that's going to increase and that's going to be a hazard to the residents that live in that neighborhood? Has anybody taken that into account? I don't think so. If it has, I would like to see some studies that have been done before this project was approved, this expansion. When you have peanuts, you have rodents, okay? Birdsong is a rock's throw from where we live. And you can ask anybody in that area, you can do a survey as to how much peanut dust they have on their homes and their vehicles. It may not affect you because you don't live there, but we do. It also affects the property value. The homes are not going to be worth that much with the peanut factory that's producing all of this excess traffic and peanut dust. And when I tell you, you go out to your vehicle when they're processing, and your car is covered, and you can't just wipe it off. It doesn't just wipe off easily. Birdsong was contacted about this problem, the peanut dust. The solution to us was, we'll offer to wash your vehicles. That was their solution. To me, that was an insult. I don't need you to wash my car. I need you to take care of the problem that you have all this excess. So environmental quality was contacted. They go over and they do an inspection to see why there's so much excess peanut dust. Birdsong has machinery that's not functioning properly. It gets clogged up. Who has to pay the price for that? The residents. So this is very disheartening because it sounds like this is a done deal, and we were not consulted, residents. None of us. A lot of the residents that had homes, have homes, they're deceased, built homes, most of those residents died of some type of cancer. So it's just something to think about. You're putting your residents at risk without consulting them. You're doing a $25 million expansion right at my back door. Right at my back door. Would you want it at your back door? I don't think so. I don't think so.
I'm sorry, ma'am, that concludes your time.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for listening.
Yes, ma'am.
Margaret Nguyen, 212 Maple Street, representing self regarding birdsong expansion.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and the City Council. I'm going to appear on the concerns of birdsong expansion. If I look out my front door, I look at birdsong and all the dust that flies in the air, and all the people on my block in the neighborhood that have died from cancer, from the peanut dust, the chemicals that the farmers put on the peanuts. So when the trucks come to birdsong, it's airlifted and it goes airborne. I call the environment people on them, and a lot of things that they were doing weren't supposed to be doing because had nobody complained about it. They just did what they wanted to do. I don't think it's fair because all of the peanut factories, all of the fertilizer factories, sadly to say, the railroad tracks are in the black neighborhood, and I don't think it's fair. The noise we have to listen to because it's so noisy and it's dusty. Now, this big expansion that's going to happen, I want to know how could y'all turn, allow a residential area to become industrial? On Madison Avenue, people stay there. On Mulberry Street, people stay there. I stay on Maple Street, and it's terrible. And y'all doing all this expansion, allowing them to do all this expansion without contacting us. Y'all turning, you're just doing everything, and we weren't notified about the expansion that they was going to do. We had to see it on the news, the State of Suffolk Union. So I don't think it's fair. And I'm here because we have nice homes there. We were people that worked and want to do better for ourselves, and then y'all, the council, allowed them to come in and just wreck our neighborhoods, take our neighborhoods from us. That's not fair to us because it's not in your neighborhood. Y'all wouldn't have it in your neighborhood. Am I right or wrong? So I'm very displeased with it, very displeased, that y'all allow him to do what he's doing to us. And then you have a school over there, Bogota, Washington School. And then you have a school over there, Bogoté, Washington School. Kids got peanut allergies. I have allergies from all the environment. So that's why I'm here, my concern about his expansion, that y'all allow a residential area to become industry without notifying the people that stayed in the area. That's all I have to say. Y'all have a good evening.
Next speaker is Todd Kreiner, 124 Beechwood Drive, representing self regarding mowing during peak hours.
Good evening, Mayor Newman, Vice Mayor Minut, City Council and Clerk. First of all, I'd like to give a shout out real quick to, let's see here, on the public safety report by Police Chief Chandler. I thought it was kind of a nice report that you put out there. It's nice for us constituents to see what our police department's doing. And you were talking about the culture and some of the things that are going on in today's day and age. We really do appreciate the job that you all do. And I just wanted to, as a constituent, let you know, we appreciate it. Onto my agenda. And it kind of falls under safety as well. We had the COVID, so for a couple of years, we didn't really have much traffic. But this actually went, goes back to about maybe three years ago. I was driving home one day and as, which was kind of, this is kind of a nice segue that Councilman Fawcett brought up with the traffic. And I believe Mayor Newman, you was talking about something about 5:00-ish. So I think most people can agree between 4:00, 5:00-ish, we have our peak traffic around this area, especially on 58, 460. But I was coming home from work on 58 and ran into some of the worst traffic I've ever experienced, this is like three years ago. And I tweeted out when I got home to Suffolk, to DOT, I think it was a DOT thing, because when I got to what I thought was a fatality or an accident, it was down to one lane due to mowing. So they chose to, and I thought that was the craziest thing in the world. Why would you mow on 58 and put it down to one lane to cause potential accidents, back up highway for miles, which impedes the police officers, first responders from doing their job as well? I mean, it's ridiculous. And DOT got back with me and told me that they didn't know anything about, didn't have any trucks there. And then after they responded, Suffolk tweeted back and said that they contract that out. So it's not their problem. So I don't know, I guess I'm asking you if you contract that out? If you do? My biggest concern is just to take into consideration if it is contracted out, maybe you should let the contractors know that 4:00, 5:00 in the evening, taking it down to one lane on 58 is probably a really, really, really bad idea. It's unsafe. And also your constituents have to sit there and just, and this, I was on motorcycle, 95-degree heat with a black helmet. I mean, my head's cooking, you know? So I think that we can do a better job with that. And I really hope that you, I know contractually, there's things you can do, I'm sure, to get them to shift the time, because there's gotta be plenty of places to mow on, during those time periods. But maybe they can do off-peak, like 9:00 AM to, say, 2:00 PM or something. But I'm sure that, that's my biggest concern. I just want to, I don't think we have a DOT that does that. I think it's, is that, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's contracted out. But I would like for you to make sure they don't do, it was just ridiculous. It just happened again two weeks ago. I wasn't, I was gonna come down, I didn't get my name on the thing in time, but I was gonna come down last Wednesday and talk to you about it. But that's when it was, last Wednesday and last Thursday, they did it again. And I'm sure they're gonna do it in the future unless you say something. So thanks for your time.
Our final speaker is Carlito Hamlin, 111113 Grayson Court, representing self regarding That concludes the speakers. Mayor.
May, thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
Yes, there is one item for council's consideration, a motion to nominate and appoint Marcus Gershbach to the Paul D. Camp Community College Board effective July 1st, 2022.
Councilman Fawcett?
Blue to approve.
Councilman Goldberg?
Second, Mayor.
We have a motion for approval. Councilman Fawcett, the second, from Councilman Goldberg, getting discussion of the motion. Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved. Our vote of eight to zero.
Is there any new business, new business items that require the action of City Council for consideration? Hearing none, we'll move on to announcements and comments. And at this time, I'll ask if meeting Community Relations Director Tim Kelly has any announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. We begin tonight with a ribbon cutting involving an international company. At the Shore, a global leader in the olive oil industry with roots in Spain and a production facility in Suffolk Industrial Park, celebrated their grand opening with ribbon cutting ceremony. Although the facility has been operational since 2019, due to the pandemic, they've not been able to officially celebrate. That, of course, changed the other day. Suffolk Facility handles the company's bulk oil imports from Spain, Portugal, Tunisia, and Greece. Since 1840, At the Shore has been producing, packaging, and marketing olive oil, exporting to more than 100 countries worldwide. They control the olive oil process from ground to bottle. Suffolk Police Department will hold a promotional ceremony at 6:00 PM, Monday, June 6th. That'll be held at Kings Fork High School. The ceremony will feature the promotion of one major, one captain, two lieutenants, six sergeants, and 10 master police officers. The department will also hold a badge-pinning ceremony on Tuesday, June 14th. That'll be at 11:00 AM here in City Council Chamber, as the police department welcomes two new members to their force. Suffolk Department of Public Works is hosting a job fair on Saturday, June 25th. That'll be from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. That's gonna be held at the Public Works Operations Center at 800 Carolina Road. The event will connect job seekers with the appropriate staff members representing the various open positions within the Public Works team. Attendees will have the opportunity to apply and interview on site. Public Works employees will also be there to answer questions and share their personal experiences working for the City of Suffolk. And HR staff will also be there to provide assistance and discuss the city's benefits again Saturday, June 25th. Suffolk Parks and Recs Free TGIF Summer Concert Series, of course, kicks off on Friday, June 17th at Constance Wharf Park and Marina. All concerts will start at 6:00 PM and run until 9:30. And then on July, that'll be at Constance Wharf. They run there through the July 22nd date. Starting July 29th, of course, the concert series moves to Bennett's Creek Park. Food vendors will be on site for each of these concerts you see on the screen there. Suffolk Public Works Stormwater Division is accepting applications for pet waste stations in an effort to help keep Suffolk neighborhoods free of dog waste. If your neighborhood, HOA, or community association is ready to start making scooping the poop a priority, then you're invited to apply. Stormwater Division will grant stations to community associations that meet application requirements such as emptying the garbage can when full, ensuring pet waste bags or garbage can liners are stocked and available for use, and ordering replacement pet waste bags or garbage can liners in a timely manner. If you'd like more information, you can contact Jamie Baggett at 514-7073. As you've been previously made aware, City of Suffolk is updating the Comprehensive Plan and seeking input from the community. The Comprehensive Plan is a long-range guide for land use, housing, transportation, parks and open space, economic development, and more. An online survey seeking community input is currently underway, and of course, it will conclude on June 15th. There are also paper surveys available here at City Hall, Suffolk Public Library locations, as well as community centers. To date, over 800 paper surveys have been distributed in the community. Additional input opportunities this summer. We'll see staff out and about, asking questions or directing participants to the project website at festivals and events throughout Suffolk. This fall, staff will be testing out scenarios and holding public input meetings and workshops as well. Get that project website at Suffolk2045.org. Residents seeking a COVID-19 vaccination are encouraged to visit vaccinatevirginia.gov or contact the state call center to find out a vaccination location convenient to them. We always like to throw out that little reminder there. And speaking of reminders, the ways we reach out to residents and business owners, variety of options pictured on your screen there. Also like to note the number in the upper left-hand portion of your screen, 5144000. You wanna get connected with city services, or you wanna reach the switchboards, we can answer some questions or get you directed, feel free to call that number. We have staff there to assist. With that, say good evening to all.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Kelly. Now, we're going to announcements from council, and we're gonna start with Councilperson Butler Barlow. Let me get you hooked up here. You're on.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any comments tonight. I appreciate all the reports that we received this evening, especially from Chief Chandler. I think gun violence is first and foremost on all of our minds after the past week's events. And I just hope that we can do our small part if we each do a little something, maybe we can make it better. If you are a person who works outside, hopefully you've been taking care of yourself the last few days. It's hot, stay hydrated, and remember that your farmers are out on the road doing their jobs and trying to get their business done. And I can't think of anything else, so with that, I'll say good night. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson.
All right, and I'll be brief as well. I'd like to thank Chief Chandler, our fire chief, our Public Works people, all of them for doing the job they do. And for the grass cutting thing, I too live on 58, and it's really tough for these people out there cutting grass. So we need to be aware of the people cutting grass on the sides of the roads, slow our traffic down, and know that they have children and families at home as well. It's a tough nut. I always wonder how they're gonna keep the grass cut on these roads because it is very, very difficult. And right now, they are out there doing their job. I just wanna say one thing. An event happened to me the other day in the grocery store, and I'm just, wanted to comment on the fact that this one lady in the grocery line in front of me did such a wonderful thing for me. She restored my faith in mankind. I won't even go tell you what she did, but it just blew me away. And her comment was, well, I know who you are and I appreciate you, and we all live in Suffolk together, and we are in such a wonderful place. We are so blessed to have each other. And I just thought Suffolk is really a good place to live. So pay it forward, do a good deed for somebody. It's gonna affect somebody when they most need it. And that day, I needed a little bit of humanity, and this woman just blew me away with her kindness. And I hope she's hearing this tonight because it was just remarkable what she did. And with that being said, we are in a world of, sometimes it seems so chaotic right now, and we need to appreciate each other, appreciate those around us, appreciate our law enforcement, and let's look after each other, for God's sake, and do a good job. And with that, I'll just say good night.
Councilman Fawcett?
I have a lot to say tonight, but I'm gonna go ahead and shorten it up for you.
Okay, good.
Because I probably blew my time earlier this evening on the.
Let me ask, do we have any objections from anyone before you get, all right, you're good.
But anyway, Chief Chandler, thanks for your report. It's always good to take a look at the numbers, and there's a lot of hamper road cities that are struggling with different aspects of their crime in their city. And, you know, it can't be everywhere and everything, but you're doing a good job with what you got. I hope you've been able to recruit some more people and get that to give you a little more relief. Look forward to seeing what you got in your bag of tricks here in the next few weeks. But tell all the men and women that we appreciate what they do. And I think, I don't speak for everybody, but I think everybody up here is very supportive of what they do out there because it is tough. They take a lot of abuse. I mean, it takes a real strong person to take some of the abuse they take. But anyway, I appreciate what they do along with the other public safety people in our organization. And for all the department heads that control all these groups, you need to thank them, that you're all doing a good job out there. Yes, we could always do better, but you're doing a good job, and we value each and every city employee. I wanna thank everybody. I've been down a little bit under the weather. I got some things going on, and I had a lot of people reach out and offer prayers and watching me vigilantly. And I would like to personally extend a thank you to a council member on this chamber, Mr. Goldberg, who has been alongside of me since this process started, and he's with me every day of the week. It doesn't matter what day it is. So I wanna thank everybody for keeping me in their thoughts and prayers. Thank you for a good job tonight, everybody on council. We may not have agreed on everything, particularly me, but it's okay. That's what's part of the government, and that's the way we operate. So thank you each and every one of you, and I hope to see you on the next meeting. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Councilman Williams.
All right. Can you push your button? Don't push your button. Okay, there you go. You got me? Now you're good. All right. Again, Chief, you have our support. We're behind you 100%. Please let, let the others, let your officers know that you have council support. To the residents in the Wellaville Borough, I wanna hear from you. I've been saying it every week, I like to hear from you. Please go on the website, get my information, reach out to me. I need to hear from you. I wanna hear from you. And with that, I'd like to say good night.
Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, Roger, we're all pulling for you, buddy. We're all there for you. All the prayers, a lot of people know and praying for you, and you're gonna make this. You're gonna make this. Look, you got Candy in the audience. Come on. Candy's pulling for you for sure. White Candy? And I know you've done a great job, so you've had some rough time, but you're gonna be okay. You're gonna be there. And we're gonna see you up here more often, so it's gonna be okay. First of all, the gentleman with the, the traffic with the grass cutting, I've experienced the same thing. Coming in on Route 460, coming in on 58, 460 coming in, the grass cutting was done at an hour that I thought, well, maybe, maybe they shouldn't be there. Maybe there's another time. But I don't know the schedule. I don't know that it works, but I certainly understand your plight. Certainly, if you said you were on a motorcycle, sometimes that heat, that's pretty hot. And so I feel your pain a little bit. Chief, absolutely support you all the way. Have always done that, as you know. And we're gonna get there. You got great, great officers. I also wanna speak out for the Fire Department. They do a magnificent job, especially the emergency folks. They get there. Someone is in need, they arrive. They arrive fast, and they get the job done and get you to the hospital or whatever. And I must tell you, they do an outstanding job. So we're very fortunate, Mr. Manager, with your leadership and with the team that you have. I wanna just thank you and keep them going. Keep it going. Don't, don't, don't look back. Just move ahead. So with that, I say good night.
Councilman Ward?
Yes, I'd like to thank, I'd like to give you all the kudos. We had a great State of the City. Mayor did a good job. Tim, you did a good job putting together, Hugh, because nor did not, me and a couple of the councilmen, we did attend other State of Cities, and one in particular, we were rooting for Suffolk to really knock it out the park. And I think y'all did a great job. As a media person, I like to look over flyers and things you give to the public. That logo is a plus, One Suffolk. I don't know who created, but that is one of the best things I've seen when you advertise the City of Suffolk. I think that was great. It really was. It speaks for itself when you got northern Suffolk down there. And like I said, the mayor put it all together. When you just look and see what's going on in Suffolk, it'd be surprising. Some of the stuff you don't even know, but you just take advantage of it, take it for granted. But when you see what we got going on in Suffolk, then you realize why people is coming. And we just got to be ready for that. This time, Wine, you did a good presentation. I mean, I really enjoyed this one. I didn't wanna say nothing. I didn't wanna get you shookin' up. I didn't want you to take my message the wrong way, but you did fine. Robert Lewis, I told you the same thing. I didn't wanna say too much, but you knew I was gonna ask you some questions. So y'all did. This was one of the best presentations, not only I thought, but I understood what was going on. It was really good. It really good. Please, Chief, I knew you wasn't do well, and I appreciate you at the helm. And like I said, no. doing well, and I appreciate you at the helm. And like I said, Noran and I, I do brag about you. I be telling people that I know you. And when they come with me some situations, and I give you a call, you respond right away, especially in the northern part of Suffolk. We call it C-square, but you do respond right away. And at the helm, I think we'll be, the numbers are not surprising to me. I was proud of the numbers that I saw. Like I said, I got to agree with Councilman Goldberg. I had an incident about a couple of months ago, and that fire departments was right on. I mean, wow. I, wow. I just, it was great. And they made sure that I understood what was going on and stuff like that. So like you said, we got a, we got a great city. I think we're, we're going to stand to the task. We're growing. I think we'll be fine. Like I said, I'm proud to be on council. I'm proud of living in Suffolk. Thank you so much. God bless.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Thank you, sir. I'd just like to start again by saying to all of our public safety officers and fire and rescue. I think everybody's really, has been put through the challenge here lately. If we look at the number of fires and stuff that they have been fighting as well. So I just want to commend all of our public safety people. And again, I can't say enough about what you all are doing to keep our city safe. So also, I'd like to just say Pam probably get upset with me saying that she had surgery, I think, today. Pam King at the fire department. And I saw that out there. So I want to send my best wishes out to her on her getting over her surgery and all, and being able to get back to work. Also, Marshall, he have had surgery as well from Public Works. Called him to check on him, and he's improving. So I want to send a shout-out as well that have him as well in my thoughts and prayers with going through that surgery. And I'm sure he gonna be all right. My friend here, Mr. Fawcett, it's good to see you, my brother. And you look good. And we're keeping you lifted up in prayer. And you will go be 100% before we know it. Because we got the right, right thing. We have God in front, so we have faith in Him. So we have faith in you. So you keep up the good work, doing what the doctors tell you. And I know your wife can make sure that you're following all the instructions. So if you do that, I think you'll probably be okay. Also, the children be getting out of school in another week. We need to think about that when we're driving. There will be more in the street, so we need to make sure that we sort of drive careful. Hopefully that they will have a safe summer. And you know, I've been seeing the news a lot worrying that people is crossing the street now, getting hit by cars and whatnot. So we need to make sure that we sort of be careful now with our children. Getting out, there's going to be a lot of them out there in the summer in the streets. So let's be mindful of that. And with that, I would say, I thought we had a, we had predicted we was going to be out here by 8:00 and 7:30 or what?
Close.
Didn't quite make it. So we thank everyone for coming out and all your comments. And I thank you for participating. And whatever you have on your mind, this is what we are sitting up here to do, is listen. So please keep coming. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go ahead and wrap it up. We'll start with Councilman Fawcett. Good to see you tonight. You know, I talked to you yesterday when I got the news that you were coming. Expect you to be here two weeks from now, too. You know, we'll send a limo for you if we have to, and, you know, we'll get you here. State of the city, and I'm almost at a loss for words. I mean, talk about a team effort. That's what it was, you know. And Tim Kelly and his team, obviously, were at the forefront, but everybody participated in it. When you look at the videos, each department was represented. Each department provided information. You know, a lot of the folks up there, they're either, you know, in the video portion, they had a speaking portion, or they had provided information for us, for Tim to incorporate into the video. Andy's drone shots were just, you know, off the chain. I did not, I did not go to all the state of the cities, but I did attend several. And I know I might be a little prejudiced, but ours was really good. And I say ours, because it's not mine. It was, everybody else put it together. And I know Tim finally got some rest. He got tired of me calling him two and three times on a Sunday when I got another brainstorm, and he said, I'm going in, I'll change it. But I really do appreciate it. Our city looks good on its own, just based on what we do, where we are. There were so many more things we could have actually incorporated into it. We had to kind of cut it down, you know, a little bit. So I appreciate, I really do appreciate all the effort that went into it. Ribbon cutting, oh, excuse me, same day, just that night, we had the 100th anniversary of Suffolk Rotary. The Suffolk Rotary Club celebrated their 100th anniversary at the Cultural Arts Center. And I want to congratulate them on that 100 years and everything they've accomplished, and what they've provided to our, to our city during that time. And I'm going to pronounce this, I'm going to try to pronounce it. The next day, we had Assis Shore, Assis Shore. It's an olive oil company. They produce like 40% of all the olive oil, like in the world or something. It's amazing. Councilman Goldberg was there, Vice Mayor Bennett was there. And we did a ribbon cutting. They're out of Spain. You know, I mean, I was a little embarrassed, because I would think that, as mayor, I'm supposed to have some kind of an idea what's going on in our city. But our city is just so big, and there's so much going on. And I kind of knew, you know, kind of where it was. But until I actually got to the building, we went inside and saw the production. I mean, it's just amazing. All the olive oil, you see it programmed, and they're doing the bottles, and they're spitting the stuff out. There's great big vats, and they're shipping everywhere in the United States. And it's right here in our city. And like I said, it just boggles my mind how much we have going on, and how much more we're going to have going on. Yesterday, was today, Wednesday, no, Monday, I went out to the Albert Horton VA Cemetery, which is right down the street from my house. I saw the very first headstone go up. And we had the opportunity, the city manager, we went together, and Albert Horton Jr., who's the son of the individual who worked on this project for nine years, to get it located in Suffolk. And I kind of asked him, I said, well, how did they come up for that location? You know, it's kind of, you know, out there to me. And he explained to me it had to do with elevation and population and traffic. But anyhow, we ended up with it in our city. And we don't think about it often. But Memorial Day, if you really want to preach Memorial Day, appreciate Memorial Day. Go through Chocotac, go down Everett Road, take a left on Milner, and that's where it is. Take a look at the thousands and thousands of flags that were placed out there in front of those headstones, and what it means. It's definitely something you've got to experience. If you don't do anything but just drive by, get out of the car, and take a look at it. It'll make you realize, you know, what sacrifices have been made by so many to allow us to do what we're doing today. The comp plan, they mentioned that again today. I'm all about processes. You don't have to necessarily like the results, but the process is in place. And one thing that the manager has done, and I've tried to do, is make sure that we have the right process in place. Put the process out there so citizens have the opportunity to engage. So you have the opportunity to communicate. And we can give you the information. You get back the information, whatever the process is, we do it the right way. So get out there, get your suggestions in there. Federal inmate recovery exemption, okay? House Bill 30. Doesn't sound like much, but it's been a personal pet peeve of mine for about the last eight years, been working on trying to get an exemption at our regional jail, which we, for lack of a better term, it's Suffolk, Olive White, and Franklin, and we own 70% of it. So what this did is it allowed us an extra exemption. I want to thank Randa or lobbying team, Emily Brewer, who brought it up. We also met with Senators Louise Lucas and Senator Tommy Norman. So we were on both sides of the aisle, Democrat and Republican. We had support from both of them. And this year, it finally happened. It was incorporated into the bill. And what it's going to amount to for our city is roughly, the total savings to the jail will probably be between $500,000 and $700,000 a year, of which we'll benefit from about 70% of that. It doesn't sound like much, but, you know, we'll take it. And as the jail continues to get more federal inmates, it's not, not going to hurt us. And with that, I'm going to go to my quote of the night, if I can find it. It's in here somewhere. I got it buried. Quote of the night, where are you? Here it is, a big one. Do I?
The young lady who sang.
Oh, yeah. We had, there was a young lady that sang at the ceremony, memorial ceremony at the cemetery. She's from Portsmouth. She's about eight years old, maybe? Nine? Girl can wail. So we're going to try to hook her up for the state of the city for next year. Al was out there trying to sign her up. Oh, if you don't mind me asking, do you do this for a living or what? So, you know, she was pretty impressed. So we're going to try to hook her up for state of the city next year. So we're already thinking in advance. But the quote from, for tonight, is from John Thune, Thun, T-H-U-N-E. Anybody know who he is? No? Nobody? Okay. He's a U.S. Senator from South Dakota, which is a little out there. It's spelled T-H-U-N-E. And his quote is, "I believe our flag is more than just cloth and ink. It is a universally recognized symbol that stands for liberty and freedom. It is the history of our nation, and it's marked by the blood of those who died defending it." And that's the end of his quote. And I got another little quote. It's probably not a quote. I don't know what it is. I just kind of read it, and I thought it'd be appropriate. It may not be politically correct, but that is, if you plan on burning the flag, wrap yourself in it first. And that's all I got for tonight. So if nobody has any other business, I make a motion, we'd like a motion for adjournment. And we have Councilman Fawcett.
So.
And we have Councilman Williams.
Second.
Second from Councilman Williams. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. I'm, I'm sorry, call the roll. I think I need to, phew. Council members, prepare to vote. Council members, please vote. Madam Clerk, record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.